I'd like to call this meeting to order. First thing is, under consent items, item C, the 506 Rushview Drive is off the agenda for this meeting. Before we have the open forum, I would like to read a beiorial proclamation.
Come on, come up here.
Go ahead.
Yeah, because I see you.
In front of the camera.
Actually, if you back up behind here, you'll be good there.
You're gonna be a crawl under the table.
Go back.
Whereas Jefferson Matters has been named the 2025 Great American Main Street Award winner by Main Street America, a prestigious honor recognizing exceptional accomplishments in revitalizing and strengthening the historic downtowns across the country. And whereas, this award is a reflection of the timeless dedication, creativity, and collaboration of countless volunteers, community leaders, business owners, and residents who have worked together to build a vibrant, welcoming, and thriving downtown Jefferson. And whereas, Jefferson Matters has consistently demonstrated excellence in the community engagement, economic vitality, design, historic preservation, making Jefferson a model Main Street community both in Iowa and nationwide. Whereas, the recognition of the 2025 GAMSa winner places Jefferson among the best of the best and provides inspiration and pride for our citizens while affirming our shared values of progress, heritage, and community spirit. Now, therefore, I, Craig Berry, Mayor of Jefferson, do hereby proclaim the calendar year of 2025, the Year of GAMSa in the City of Jefferson, and further proclaim that May 9th, a Friday 2025, is GAMSa Celebration Day in Jefferson. In recognition of its remarkable achievement, I've encourage all the citizens to join in commemorating this honor, celebrating the continued revitalization of our historic downtown, and showing appreciation to Jefferson Matters and all who contribute to the heart and soul of our community. In witness thereof, I have hereunto set my hand and cause the official seal of the City of Jefferson to be affixed on this 22nd day of April 2025.
Thank you.
Mayor?
I think you won it after too bad. Good idea.
Hold on, hold on, hold on. You gotta like put down a bit so that... Beautiful. One, two, three. Beautiful. Emily has to take it.
Stinker.
I do. Thank you very much.
Congratulations. Way to go, by the way. I didn't know that was coming. It's good. No, I didn't either.
Section 2, the open forum. I see we have one person signed in to speak.
Is that good? Well, my name is Cindy Wise, and I just wanted to go to my grandson Gideon's baseball game tonight. That was my plan initially. And when I found out that you were gonna vote on the Centennial Upper Story Housing Grant, I felt compelled to come here and speak at the open forum instead. I have been very supportive of the Centennial. I bring older citizens there for lunch who need to get out and have a nice lunch. I bring my sisters from out of town and out of state to the Centennial. I bring my daughter there. I go there with my friends. And now, I'm having to make a decision not to go there anymore if they're going to choose to have a Drag Queen Bingo Day on May 3rd. And this is why. Kids are looking for leaders. And I see leaders in this room, either by parents or teachers. Matt, you're a parent. I'm pulling out a couple people. Mr. Jackson, you're a teacher. Kids are looking for leaders. And so, I would like to have it on record tonight from Matt and Mr. Jackson. If you are willing to say, "I do not believe Drag Queen Bingo is a perversion," and I would be willing to take my kids to that event, and I would be willing to take my students to that event because I do not feel that that is a perversion, then I want it to be on record tonight. Because I think it's a hypocrisy when people on this city council get to vote for things that affect my children, that affect my grandchildren, that influence all the kids in this community, but yet they hold out their students or their children from such events. And so, I want it on record. Are you taking your kids to this event because you do not believe it's perverse? I think our community needs to know. I believe it is perverse. I believe it's very, very grievous for our community to have such an event in such a lovely place as the Centennial. And especially, I want to hear from anybody really on this board, but I'd like to specifically hear from Matt and Mr. Jackson tonight. Because to me, the greatest hypocrisy of all is to expect others to endorse something and not yourself, especially when you have the governmental power to stop it. Like I say, kids are looking for leaders. Are we gonna lead our kids in the right way? Or are we gonna lead our kids to drag queen shows? Once again, I'm not willing to support any business in town or any city council in town that votes for such an event. Thank you. And now, I'd like to hear from all of...
I guess I'm not sure what power the city is supposed to have over a private event.
Well...
Tax money.
My comment to you is that, I mean, there is no action before the city council on that tonight. It's not on the agenda for anything.
I just know that there's a grant going forth, and I am a taxpayer, and so I pay my share in that prospect.
It's the first time I've even heard of this.
First time you ever heard of the Drag Queen Bingo?
Yes.
Wow, Mr. Jackson. That's amazing.
I'm just telling you. I'm not up on my Drag Queen Bingo things, I guess.
Yeah. What about Matt?
Yeah, I've heard of it.
Do you think it's a perverse thing?
Perverse in what manner?
Sexually perverse for our kids?
No.
No? And so, you'd be willing to take your sweet girls to the event?
Absolutely.
Okay. It is on record, then, that Matt Weetrick does not think Drag Queen Bingo is a perverse event for his daughters. That's what I wondered. Anybody else have any comment about this?
Thank you.
I guess I would just say, recently, I portrayed Juliette in a play. I don't remember what the character's name was in another play.
Okay, under the consent items.
Aye.
Jackson?
Aye.
Sloan?
No, I think we need to do some further review on item E with the Centennial due to some of the stuff they're promoting in our community, and especially being named Main Street of United States, and one of our main thing is that kind of activity there. I cannot vote on... I cannot vote yes for that.
Weetrick?
Aye, and I will add, I know this is not a time for comment, but I do feel compelled. Part of what brings that recognition to this community is diversity and inclusion and equity. So, I would say it's very appropriate for part of what this community has been recognizing, welcoming people, and making people feel welcome, and everyone having equal rights. Aye.
And Sumalik?
Aye.
On to new business. Item A, now is the time for a public hearing regarding the proposed 2025-2026 budget.
No. So, we have budget adoption tonight. We're gonna do a public hearing, has a resolution on the budget. This budget presentation, you probably have seen before, it looks a little bit different. So, we'll just go over that very quickly. First, we're gonna talk about tax rates. Right here, this middle one, we are in this year, the fiscal year 2425, with a tax rate of $8.12. If you remember the year before, we are at $8.37. Last year, they did a big House File 718, I believe, and it reformulates property taxes into this combined general fund levy. Last year, we were in Tier 4, so we got reduced by the 3% reduction. Now, we are in Tier 1, and we actually have a negative growth rate, and we will get to that in just a second here. So, our tax rate is staying the exact same as last year. Last year, we were at $14.88. This year, we're at $14.88. The numbers for the individual levies have changed just a little bit, and you can review those there. But the one thing to talk about is valuation. So, you're gonna take your tax rate times your valuation, and that basically equals property tax dollars. So, again, we're keeping the same tax rate as the year before, but our evaluations have decreased. This is a change from the last time you've seen this presentation, because some of our... we got a little bit of reevaluating, revaluations that came through the county, and so those went down significantly. So, we actually have a revenue growth of a negative right there. So, with that being said, council priorities. You guys did a survey about a year ago about that. So, these are the four main ones that we're gonna talk about, the CIP plan, which includes sidewalk packs, Dobbin-Deck Park improvement, stuff like that. You'll see a lot of these. I think it's really fun to see, because you guys started these priorities a year ago, and they are continuously a work in progress. We're working on them now. They're into the next budget year as well. Housing, with that rural housing study, again, you're gonna see that assessment tonight, and we are working in citizen engagement and technology here at the offices, City Hall. Hopefully, you guys are all signing up for TextMyGov. If you're not getting with me, and I'll get your phone number on there for you. And we're working right now to get some updates to City Hall technology, just to work at efficiency. So, notable changes in revenue for the next year are these four up here. The main one to notice is, and it comes out of Finance Committee, so bravo to Finance Committee for pushing this through, is our interest on investments. All of these are investment accounts. We will see about a $200,000 difference in interest, just because we're investing those accounts a little bit more aggressively, and that came out of Finance Committee. Again, you will see increased memberships in the Rec Center. They haven't had membership increases in about 10 years or so. And the golf course. Golf course is open right now, so go out there and get your memberships. Hotel-motel fund, we're coming in a little bit higher, and our monthly road use tax money is also coming in a little bit higher as well. So, notable changes for next year's budget. Some of the big expenses and projects we have plans, these are projects inside the CIP plan that you guys have gone over a couple of different times. The first one to note is the Dobbin-Deck Restrooms. This came out of Grow Green, and we actually got a $90,000 grant from Grow Green, and so we are working through that process right now. The other $70,000 will be funded through donations, and the donation's already sitting in our bank account, just ready to happen. So, Scott and Nathan and our Public Forks crew is working really hard to get that project up and going. So, hopefully, you will have a modern-day restroom at a Dobbin-Deck to go enjoy. Other projects on the CIP plan are the fuel farm, which you guys will talk again tonight about, a fire truck. We're funding this halfway out of our internal sinking fund, which is, think about it like a savings account, and the other half through a bond. There's also some water projects between the 2-inch main on South Wilson Street, some minor repairs at the water plant, backup power with generators on well number 9 and number 10, hydrant replacement and valve replacement that we do each year. Some more CIP projects through the wastewater, is the lift station, normal flushing and cleaning, pipe cleaning and root cutting, and lining Russell Street from Elm Street to Wilson Street. More CIP projects on the 1-4 streets would be crack sealing, chip sealing, we do that every year. The Streets team does an incredible job of trying to quadrant off the city and get those replaced as fast as they can. ADA replacement pass for sidewalks and fairground roof. The cold storage there is going to be getting a new roof. A large part of our budget is transfers back and forth between our enterprise funds, our general fund. So, just going over these here. Metry removal fund to help with those ash trees is going from a special revenues account to general fund. Just normal admin use for airport to general fund, new truck, library automation for technology, police share for the LEC, street lighting. The police does an incredible job of putting aside money for their duty vehicles, their admin vehicles, and body armor. An admin expense from recycling to general fund. We put away money for new trucks for sanitation and recycling. We also have some admin expenses in there as well. You also see this SRF payments. We are transferring that from basically wastewater to wastewater to pay for that SRF loan and an admin expense from wastewater to general fund. A little bit more, the water plant always transfers for wells, plant replacement, tower repairs, and water capital improvement, and also just a general expense that we have at here at City Hall. So, this is equipment that is not exactly in the CIP plan, but inside our budget as well. City Hall is gonna get some new computers and a new server. We're just about due here. Something we're really excited about is the new codification that will help Chad's job. It'll be an online searchable database, so if you're having trouble finding code of ordinances or different code, it's a searchable, like PDF document that will help you find things easier. Parks and Cemetery is splitting the cost on a new tractor. The Streets Department is getting a new drivable lift, and the Water Department is getting a new vehicle. Some other projects that are being funded in our budget next year are Washington Park. Hopefully, you guys all saw a fantabulous Facebook post from the Rec Center. The Parks Crew and Rec Center have been working together to get that equipment uninstalled. It'll be gone for about a week or so, and our new equipment will be purchased. That money came from Grow Green County Community Foundation, and then the Rec Center is using some hotel-motel funds that they have stored up for that. So, we're excited about that as well. This is a breakdown of how we're going to use hotel-motel money throughout the year. So, we have Main Street, Thomas Jefferson Gardens, Bell Tower Foundation, Bell Tower Festival, the multifamily... I always say this backwards. Sarah Huddleston.
Multicultural family resource center.
Yeah, I always say it backwards. The Children's Center, and then there's a couple, there's line down here for discretionary grants. Some things come up throughout the year that we think would be a good use of tourism dollars, essentially, and so we leave some money in the budget for that as well. Any questions, comments, concerns? Beautiful, thank you.
Go ahead, Kevry.
I think at the recent supervisors' meeting, something, or I heard something somewhere where the pavement project on McKinley, I think it was, is not gonna happen the next fiscal year. Is that right, or is that still in the plans?
Following year happens during the '26 construction season.
Okay. I didn't see it listed in the projects, or maybe I just missed it.
Because it's not included, not included in next year's budget, occurs during the '26 construction year, paid during '26-'27.
Oh, so the next fiscal year, not... Okay. I was under the understanding that you're gonna collect it this next fiscal year to go to next summer, but you're gonna collect it the following fiscal year, not the next fiscal year, but the following one?
We collect it. It's funded by that bond that we would issue that debt. Sarah, make sure I'm getting these years right, that it occurs this, that it occurs like this May, this, a year from May.
Then we'll be dispersed in May, hold on, then the previous fiscal year.
Yep.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Any other comments? Seeing none, I entertain a motion to close the public hearing. Suma?
Second.
Sumalik?
Aye.
Weetrick?
Aye.
Sloan?
Aye.
Jackson?
Aye.
Aaron Holtz?
Aye.
Item B is resolution adopting the 2025-2026 budget certification of city taxes.
Move to approve.
Second.
Sloan?
Aye.
Jackson?
Aye.
Aaron Holtz?
Aye.
Sumalik?
Aye.
Weetrick?
Aye.
Item C is ordinance amending the code of ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Iowa, 2017 by amending the provision pertaining to tree species specifications and plant regulations.
Right, this would be the third reading of the proposed tree ordinance, and there has been no further comment on that.
Move to approve.
Second.
Jackson?
Aye.
Aaron Holtz?
Aye.
Sumalik?
Aye.
Weetrick?
Aye.
Item C is ordinance amending the code of ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Iowa, 2017 by amending the provision pertaining to tree species specifications and plant regulations.
Right, this would be the third reading of the proposed tree ordinance, and there has been no further comment on that.
Move to approve.
Second.
Jackson?
Aye.
Aaron Holtz?
Aye.
Sumalik?
Aye.
Weetrick?
Aye.
Sloan?
Aye.
Item D is, now is the time for a public hearing on the planned specification form of contract and estimate of cost for the airport fuel farm improvements.
So, this is for a new fuel farm out at the airport. It's basically a little bit west of the current location. Would include both a avgas and a jet fuel station for both. They're working basically through the annual... I'm not gonna remember the acronym. The regular funding that they get each year for the airport, and also the, it's called the bill funds, I think it was.
The bipartisan infrastructure funds?
Thank you. Those are the two sources that they're going to be using for this. The project was put out to bid a little while ago. Bids were taken last week. We have that information. I can probably just continue with it now here for the public hearing, but the engineer's opinion of probable cost for base bid was $871,650. We did have a bid alternate A at $10,000, a bid alternate B at $10,000, and a bid alternate C at $25,000. And so, a total of $916,650. Bids were taken on April 15th. Three bids were received. Ivora Energy out of Grimes, Seneca Companies out of Des Moines, and Unified Contracting Services out of Des Moines. Ivora Energy was the apparent low bidder for the combined of the base bid plus all alternates. And so, that is what is being recommended, is to proceed with Ivora on base bid plus alternates A, B, and C for a total of $836,409.51. It's about 9% below the engineer's estimate. The other two, the second one was significantly higher. The third bid actually had some errors in how they submitted their bid, and so that threw their base bid off quite a bit. So, that one, that was why that one was so much higher. But, so that's where this is at now. This would be contingent upon proceeding with the contractor, and then all the contracts and everything with that would be contingent upon receiving the funding from both the FAA and the bipartisan grant. It would include the grants this year and next year, and basically take care of the majority of the requirement. I think this is a 95-5 participation, so a little bit better than their typical projects at 90-10. So, it's 95% funded and 5% match on this project.
Just a couple extra things. There are a couple things that aren't funded through the grant programs, like the credit card reader and that type of stuff. The contractor installs it, but will have to purchase that separately. That'll be outside of the contract. And this was bid for, to include the removal, and the contracted bid was $13,481 on removal. And really, really competitive bid on the removal, because we were certainly exploring the ideas of having city staff do that. There still may be an opportunity for some state funding to assist in the removal. If that comes along, that the state funding is available, we would apply for that too. But the two that would be, that we're going to approve tonight is the FAA money and the BIL money. Yeah. Good bid. And I think we're ready to go. And again, just as people express their concerns about the federal government and the status of their money, the issuance of the bid and entering into the contract is all contingent upon us following through and receiving all of that federal dollars.
Move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Aaron Holtz?
Aye.
Jackson?
Aye.
Sloan?
Aye.
Weetrick?
Aye.
Sumalik?
Aye.
Item E is resolution approving planned specifications and estimated construction costs for the construction of the fuel farm improvement project at the Jefferson Municipal Airport.
Yep, so the planned specifications were put out file with the city, and public hearing was held, and so this is just a approval of those plans and specifications to be able to move forward with the project.
Move to approve. Second.
Sumalik?
Aye.
Weetrick?
Aye.
Sloan?
Aye.
Jackson?
Aye.
Aaron Holtz?
Aye.
Item F is resolution accepting a bid authorizing award of contract contingent upon receipt and execution of grant agreement with the Federal Aviation Administration and approving an application for federal aviation funding assistance for the construction of the fuel farm improvement project at the Jefferson Municipal Airport.
So, as I said before, there was three bids received. The low bid of Ivora Energy for the base and three alternates is $836,409.51. And the aviation project manager for both of them is familiar with all three companies and satisfied with the information provided by Ivora, and is recommending approval of this, or award of this bid.
Jackson?
Aye.
Sumalik?
Aye.
Sloan?
Aye.
Weetrick?
Aye.
Aaron Holtz?
Aye.
Item G is resolution approving Green County Community School District's application for a plat of survey.
So, the city received an application for a plat of survey. This would be for the parcel that currently contains the former middle school and the gym buildings. This plat of survey would be to split off the middle school building from the gym property. That would be about 10, 15 feet on the south side of the middle school building, so I would recommend approving this plat of survey. Do you have any questions about this? Do you have any questions about that?
Second.
Samali.
Aye.
Sloan.
Aye.
Aaron Holtz.
Aye.
Jackson.
Aye.
Weetrick.
Aye.
Item H is consideration of the middle school housing redevelopment project.
You want to start with a little update from Chris, maybe, and get us into that?
All right, well, good evening, everyone. Thanks for a chance to come provide an update on this project. It has been a bit since we've heard about this project here at a council meeting. There has been a tremendous amount of effort going on in the background, especially since August of last year. If you recall, back in 2021, 2022, there was a lot of progress with the project. Several grants and tax credits were awarded for it. We even had the governor come to the community and tour the property, and then award the downtown housing grant for the specific project. And then, we started to go through the next step, which included applications to the various entities, notably the State Historic Preservation Office. And that's where we ran into a challenge with the interpretation of the gym, what had to happen with the gym. The original guidance that the gym could and should be taken down was modified, such that the gym has to remain there in place for effectively at least five years. But basically, the gym becomes a standalone, separate aspect to it. And so, that changed things quite a bit with the project. As you can imagine, the south-facing units no longer looking out at potentially a city park, but instead at a, the gymnasium as it currently stands. And so, lots of effort, lots and lots of conversations over effectively a three-year period to get through the historic process, to understand the implications of the project, to redo pro formas, rent expectations, everything. And finally, in August of last year, we got to the point where we got approval for the new design, the new approach with the project, and that's where it really picked back up. And so, since that time, have been working through the final design, the pricing of that design, working through the process to have the property transfer, hence the replating, and working on updating all of the financing to confirm that all of those tax credits and everything were still available for the project. We can get the extensions that were necessary, and have had a great success in all of that. The numerous, numerous organizations and entities that are involved with this have all been great to work with. Bolton and Mank jumped on and helped put together that replating in a very short timeframe, so appreciate their efforts there. And the state has been wonderful to work with in terms of getting extensions for this project, and so things are lining up to be able to go after the project. And so, we're very excited about that. It will have to happen very quickly. And so, getting into construction here within the next few months, and looking at roughly a one-year build-out. And so, middle part of 2026 for when the project is completed. And so, as we went through the financing process and all the verifications, we came back to city council to confirm what was part of a letter of intent back from 2021, which would include both upfront financing for the project, as well as utilizing the existing multifamily 10-year tax abatement. And so, that is the intent with the project, and what's a big part of this project to move it forward. The upfront financing being a request of $300,000. That's the same amount that it was back in 2021. Important to note that we're looking to expand the downtown TIF district, utilizing that revenue source in terms of where funds are coming from for this project. So, a separate TIF source rather than general fund, having seen that the general fund probably is going to be tight here going forward. And then, also important to note that on the tax abatement, this is a project that is currently a tax-exempt property as a school property. And so, while it is true that there would be a 10-year abatement to the improvements to the property, this would actually create an immediate impact by moving this to a taxing, an LLC ownership that is taxed on the base value of the property on day one. And so, this would start to generate property tax revenue immediately, and then, again, once the project is completed, there is a portion of that tax valuation that would be generated as soon as those complete, the improvements are completed, and then the remainder of it hitting the tax roll here at the end of year 10. And so, here to request the support of the city in line with that letter of intent back from 2021. That upfront support does total out to about 3.5% of total project costs. So, not a significant portion in the pie chart of the financing sources, but certainly is significant in terms of getting this thing to all pencil out at the end of the day. And so, would be remiss not to say thank you to the city for the support of projects like this that have happened downtown, because it's knowing that there is that level of support that often gets these projects started, and gives the ability to go after some of these other financing sources, often which need to have, needs to show city support, such as what's being requested to be formalized here moving forward. So, thank you again for being a proactive organization and enabling a lot of projects like this to happen. So, we're very excited about it. 25 units, same plan as, same intent as before. There's been a lot of great improvements in terms of design and everything as we've been going through it, but very, very optimistic about the project and excited about the possibility from it. So, also up there, but happy to answer any questions.
Why do you think you need $300,000 plus tax abatement?
If you look at this project, we are looking at roughly an eight and a half million dollar project. So, relative to most of the projects downtown, this is actually less of a request. Those projects often will get the $150,000 TIF incentive plus a 50-50 facade grant. So, this is eight and a half million. I'll compare it to the projects I've been involved with, the Odd Fellows Building Rehab, the City View Apartments Rehab, and then the Public House Restaurant Rehab. Those projects combined are roughly 6.2, 2.5, roughly $6 million, if not a little, a shade less than $6 million. And those projects collectively have received more than the requests here, this being an eight and a half million dollar project. So, although $300,000 does sound like a larger number, and it is a larger number than many of those projects have received, relative to the project size, it is a smaller request. Often, those are plumbing in more at 10% of total project financing costs, at least the ones I've been involved with trying to maintain at or below, and so 3.5% significantly less than that.
Is the old Odd Fellows Hall, was that a successful project that you did up there?
Yeah, the former Ford building. The, like any project, especially one that had a grandiose vision like that, it's never going to turn out exactly like you think it would. I would still say that there is several successes from it. We could look at specifically to that project, there was 10 students who went through and did get an education in terms of software development, did move into that software development industry. Most of that happened remotely. Most of it happened in a way that we couldn't see. That was beyond the control of really anyone here in this room, since that building was leased out to a third party. We did not expect when we started that it would be working with a global company of 500,000 employees. We thought it'd be a company of 400, that's who we'd worked with originally. But they did create some opportunities for students. More beyond that, that process is what we utilized. There was a, the learning from that process is what we then utilized for City View and for Public House. And so, the incorporation of historic tax credits, the incorporation of this collective effort to do these downtown rehab projects. If we hadn't had that project, we wouldn't have learned that. And I'm confident in saying those other projects wouldn't have happened, because we wouldn't have got that understanding of how to utilize these outside resources like state and federal historic tax credits to enable projects like that. And at the end of the day, we took a property that was assessed at, I can't remember, it was $40,000 maybe, and now is assessed at 300-plus thousand, I believe. And I'll double-check those numbers, but significantly more. And so, there's property tax revenue that's coming back to the city, too. So.
That's what I wanted to ask briefly. What did that Odd Fellows Building look like on the inside before, and what does it look like now?
It looks, three-quarters of it was dilapidated and unusable, and now it is a building that received numerous awards. We still are working with Link Broger, same individual. He started a nonprofit. He's still hoping to do something with that building. And so, we've got about a one-year window here where we're still keeping that available to him. If that doesn't happen, and like anything, like we never know, there's no guarantees with this. If that doesn't, though, all of a sudden, that becomes a building that we can utilize and work with organizations like nonprofit accelerators, like business incubators, and we've already had those conversations. So, it did not, to your point, it did not turn out like we hoped it would, but it's also not done yet. And so, we're still cautiously optimistic about, I wouldn't even say, we're still optimistic about what that building can do. And when you look at the city's input into that building, there's a payback to it, right? The funds that the city put into it through that property tax revenue alone, aside from all of the other various aspects to that project that have had tails in a positive way, I think there has been, I think at large, yeah, there's been a lot of success from it.
Before you started on that building, was it better or worse than what the middle school looks like inside now?
Similar, similar, yeah. Right now, the middle school, it's, it is in rough shape. There's been vandalism that's occurred within, many of the windows have been knocked out. This, and we're aware of that, and we're fully comfortable with that. And so, these old dilapidated buildings, the same thing for City View Apartments, right? The ceiling collapsed right before we started that. All the doors had been kicked in because there were squatters up in that building, right? I mean, this process is one where we take buildings like this that have potential and have a lot of value. If you look at the bones of these buildings, we don't build like that anymore. That's why, that's why these programs exist out there to enable this. And so, that's why we believe there is incredible value going forward with this.
Maybe this isn't a question for you, but was it finance that talked about expanding the TIF district?
Yes, yeah.
What were the thoughts behind that?
Well, we've already talked quite a bit about blight districts that exist here in town now, and including them in a TIF district. And there sure seemed to be a lot of similarity with the school property there with the other blight districts that we've already identified. So, with that, it just made a whole lot of sense to include that in the TIF, along with it being part of the urban renewal area. So, that was the addition, but particularly as we look at going forward, going forward from this project upon completion, now we've got some flexibility as we look down the road after the 10-year tax abatement for the potential of new projects down in that whole area. And Scott may want to add to that.
Yeah, I'd like to talk through this a little bit about process, because as we're thinking about these two things, there's two separate things, the $300,000 forgivable loan, and then there's tax abatement side of things, okay? The forgivable loan is funded by TIF, that's where the dollars come from. And in order to be able to expend those funds, the property needs to be included in an urban renewal area. Okay, so the downtown area is in the urban renewal area. Actually, the area across the street to the east of the school is in the urban renewal area. Okay, so this takes an amendment to the area to include the school property in it, which likely includes the school property and probably all that block to the south. So, what that does then is allows the TIF dollars to be spent in that area. So, that's really item number one, is amending the current urban renewal area so that you spend TIF dollars there. The other unique thing about this, using TIF for housing, it needs to go to LMI housing. So, we will specifically state that it goes to LMI. Chris has five LMI units in that. Second aspect of that, though, is, and think of these things completely different, because you've got the downtown TIF, and then we would also propose then that we would create a new TIF district based on blight. And based on the condition of that existing middle school building, certainly is a blighted condition. So, we would designate what the blighted area would be, and we'd create a new district off of that, okay? Now, we create this TIF district, but Chris would be receiving tax abatement off of that. So, you create this TIF district, it runs for 10 years with a tax abatement in place, so essentially, it doesn't create increment over the course of that 10 years. But when you get to 11, year 11, you've laid the groundwork for some TIF dollars to be generated out of that. So, as you look really long-term and know that there's some additional plans for additional amenities in the area, this could be a potential funding source then for the potential amenities in the future. So, as we talk about this tonight, really I'm looking for the council to endorse the concept again about these two forms of assistance, the loan and the tax abatement. And that really just gets me my marching orders to go get everything lined up so that it can happen.
Blight seems like a strong word, but that's a state word, right?
That is, that is a state word.
And what, how do they define that?
Actually, blight is largely determined by the local officials. And there, but of course, it is a state of disrepair, you know, being the main definition of what blight is, and again, this certainly qualifies.
It's been a long time, but, you know, I went through there, and it's surprising how long, or how short a time of a building standing open or unused can really, I mean, there was already plaster coming down, and it hadn't even been closed that long.
On the downtown buildings, do they all get a 10-year abatement on their remodel loans, or do they pay taxes from that time?
You mean the abatement part?
Yeah, on these downtown phosphate loans and assistant loans, they pay taxes. Why are we going to do something different on those?
Yeah, typically, the downtown agreements that have been entered into, there's provision in there that the tax abatement is not, they're not eligible for tax abatement. They have to forego that. So, this would be something the council would have to agree to if they're going to move forward with a project like this.
And part of the reason for the request in that structure is to not ask for too much in upfront financing, knowing that this thing is going to create additional taxable revenue that didn't exist otherwise. This is a unique project on several fronts, but this one's going to immediately create tax revenue that didn't exist. And by saving this property, that enables that as a way to really offset a lot, the impact of that abatement.
I just don't agree at all with the tax abatement on it. You're going to have $8.5 million in a building. I mean, if you can't afford the taxes and the extra expenses you're going to run into, it's a project that, you know, why has everything got to be given to you? They want to change TIF districts, they want to do this and that. Why don't we do that down on East Lincoln Way and get some development out of those businesses down there that could use a little bit of help? They just get shut down, and now it's like, let's do it. It's a win for the school, because the school doesn't want it. They want a gun, and I don't know why the citizens and taxpayers' money needs shoved into an absolute for-profit apartment. I, if they give you the $300,000, but I will not support a tax abatement on that, because then anybody that buys a house and remodels it, give them an abatement. I just got a problem with that, and that's my opinion.
And certainly appreciate the concerns, and understand that this is a project that, like I said, it's a unique project. This is one when the, with the implications of the gym staying, this has turned into a project that is more of a community project. When you look at how this thing pencils out, this is one that we see kind of collectively the importance of this to the community. We think there's an incredible potential from this. We've had numerous people reach out to us saying that this is a project that, this is the one that potentially opens up some of our other housing stock. Some of the empty nesters, the retirees around the community who have wonderful homes that would be wonderful for a young family to move into, this is a project they're watching closely, because this might be the place where they would like to move into and free that home up. We've had multiple people from out of town, Jefferson residents, who have reached out and said, hey, we love what's happening in Jefferson, and think it's a wonderful community, and this is the project that we would like to use as a way to come back to the community. And so, we think that it fits uniquely into all of the things that this community is doing, and that's why there's an incredible amount of time that's been spent on it and will be spent on it to try to bring this all together. And that's why we're trying to find a way, a unique way that the city can help, but not in a way that's going to impact the city negatively. And so, to your concern about the taxpayer dollars, again, the upfront financing coming from the TIF source that we've utilized downtown, and the tax abatement in reality is creating taxable revenue, since this thing's not on the tax roll anyway right now. So, it's generating $0. The estimate is that this thing will be valued when it transfers at $150,000 to $200,000. Obviously, we'll find out once we get to that point, but that immediately starts to generate taxable income for the community to actually help offset, help create new revenue for this community. And then, through that process also, the, the improvements at roughly $10 for every $1,000 valuation, that's going to create taxable income to go toward schools and community as well. So, we see it as a way to actually, actually help with taxable income to the community in the, in the bigger picture.
I had some of those same questions, but I think some, and I'm not, I didn't walk lightly into this and just like say, oh... But I look at, maybe not Grand Junction School as much, but Rippey. That school could have been something fantastic, but it just wasn't going to happen in that community at this point in time. And then I look at Scranton and what they have done with the school that they had, you know, after it closed. I don't want, the school can't stay there forever and just be broken windows and raccoons and whatever. And if it can be something besides an empty lot, I guess that's why I approve and that's my opinion.
I say more than, more than an empty lot. I mean, if you think, look at that old school building. What, what would be the, probably the highest, most economical use and value for that property? I can't, I can't think of one. I, I've, I've tried to think of one that would be better and different than this, but I keep coming back, this is probably, it, it's not even on the tax rolls right now and it probably won't go on the tax rolls short of a project there. And now, we've got the opportunity with a project that is likely the highest and best use of that property we'll ever see and that's available to us right now.
Yeah, I guess, I guess I'm on the same thought process. I mean, is a 10-year tax abatement my favorite thing? No, probably not. But in 10 years, it could be a vacant lot, still not generating any income, so.
Yeah, and a further dilapidated building, probably.
And doesn't address the housing issue.
See, the, the question had come up about the, about tax abatement and, and looking into the future and what the cash flow and really what the pro forma of the project looked like. So, I just do want to reassure that there were four of us that got together. So, me and David and Harry and Chad Stevens had got together, reviewed the pro forma on this. If the basic question was, is 10 years tax abatement truly needed to make the project go? The answer is undoubtedly yes.
I think it could be a asset and a good thing, I just, I just think you need to pay his taxes on it. And that's where I'm going to fold on it.
Coltrane?
Question for Chris, because I always like asking questions. Is this the final piece that you have left to gather for all the financing for the project to go? Or do you have other steps other than this step left?
This is the last piece. We got word back just this week. The downtown housing grant was the last piece that we had to get confirmation. We can get the extension we needed. We got that back to, actually, this will be coming up in a future, future meeting, I believe, for that extension. But yeah, this is the last piece to, to square things away so we can keep moving.
And if I'm correct, Scott, on the agenda, it just says to consider approving or consideration of the actual concepts and no other additional steps as far as...
Creating TIF district, all that will come in at a future meeting.
Depending on what's decided tonight.
Yeah, when I, I'd look to the, to the council, largely for my marching orders about, about what would need to be done next procedurally to, to keep pushing towards the, towards the end goal.
So, there's no resolution tonight?
No resolution, but it, but it would be asking basically, again, it's just an endorsement of the concept. But the concept is twofold, it's a $300,000 forgivable loan and the 10-year tax abatement.
But the things that have to happen, I mean, you have to have a development agreement in place and those all have to be formed. I mean, we're, we're starting from scratch on that part. So, I think it's important that if, if we're interested in doing this, that we give marching orders to, to Scott and to the rest of the staff to, to proceed with. And there's basically, basically three items here as I see it, Scott, that we need to be focused on. And those would be the, the development agreement, starting on the, the, the TIF thing as far as the blight district. And the other one would be to develop a policy statement regarding, as, as Chris said and as what's kind of come up here, this is a little bit of a unicorn as far as what we've done up to this point on our downtown buildings and other projects. But it's the biggest project we've ever looked at for the city and we want to get in place something that really talks about not just this project, but in the event that we would have another project of this size or magnitude come forward in the future, that we've got some kind of a precedent to, to move forward on that too. So, and I probably missed something, Scott, but...
No, you're, you're right, other than we'd, we'd consider whether we'd have a policy for potential consideration tonight and the, the finance committee would like to continue to, to assess what a policy might be about. The basis of the policy being again, when, when you might utilize both forgivable loan and tax abatement.
So, what would you like?
In my mind, it is that there, there is a motion to endorse the concept and the concept is the, is the two forms of assistance through the, through the $300,000 forgivable loan and tax abatement.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Jackson?
Aye.
Aaron Holtz?
Aye.
Sloan?
No.
Wietrak?
Aye.
Samali?
Aye.
Thank you.
Chris hit on it too, that the, the Oddfellows Building down there. You know, even though that didn't turn out the way that you originally planned, what we have there right now is a community asset, even though it isn't occupied. It's performing the task or the job that was initially designed. But it is a community asset, it's on the tax rolls at a different rate than it was before.
And that is being used...
And it's a future opportunity.
And it is being used as the Gravitate co-working space. And so, this didn't necessarily come up here.
It is being used.
It is being used, yeah. So, Gravitate...
Maybe not highest and best use yet.
By bringing Gravitate into town, that ultimately led to their former space being rented out by Carrying Hearts of Central Iowa, so another organization and user downtown. And we were able to move Gravitate over to the Oddfellows Building, which is a, a step in the process.
Performing as...
Yeah, absolutely. And we're still looking at ways to better utilize that. This is in that kind of in-between period where we're still not wanting to stop the, the big potential. But in the next year or so, we'll start looking at other options to, yeah. Well, thank you.
Thank you, Chris.
On to item I, approved facade grant for 116 North Wilson Street.
Received a request for a facade grant from Jolene Peters, Art on the Fly for 116 North Wilson. So, this is the, that's what was the John's Appliance side of the now Bolton and Mink building. Request is for 95, the total project cost was $95,000 and the request would be for $40,000, $47,500. And this would be to, to redo the facade to match what was the Art on the Fly. So, I don't know.
Jolene, I didn't know if you had any questions. I just appreciate the opportunity, everything that I've done, every, from my business, even from my full-time, part-time job, has gone back into these buildings just to improve them. It's probably, one side's probably going to need a new roof. I replaced a new roof last year. So, all of my money has been put into the building. So, I appreciate your consideration for helping me out with the facade. Do you have any questions?
So, you're the owner of this other part two?
Yep.
The Centennial Block thing?
Yeah, the two-thirds, two-thirds of it.
Two-thirds of it, okay.
Yeah.
Is it an art, is your Art on the Fly business there or is this, has that business moved?
It has moved because Bolton and Mink are renting both, both sides. Because they wanted a bigger space, so. Hopefully, I will be back on the square again. I had to temporarily move and then hopefully I will find a new home or stay there by Casey's, so. But I will stay in town.
So, is this grant for Jolene Peters, or is this for Art on the Fly?
Art on the Fly.
But Art on the Fly is not in that building?
Not at this time, no.
It is listed in the name of the order, there Chad, Art on the Fly LLC is the property order.
And so, yeah, this was reviewed by the Downtown Building Committee and was recommended for approval.
Salute. Second.
Samali?
Aye.
Wietrak?
Aye.
Jackson?
Aye.
Sloan?
Aye.
Aaron Holtz?
Aye.
Item J is consider approval of pay estimate number 26 to Shank Constructors Incorporated for $226,321.59 for the wastewater treatment plant project.
Yes, so this is for work completed through the, basically through the month of March. We're a little late on the application or on the request because of the regular April 8th meeting being canceled due to the Main Street trip. So, this is for basically March. Things that were worked on, ferric chloride feed system, rehabbing digester one, some, some of the area and attachment sidewalks, demo of the old UV system, clarifier three, final installation and startup, RAS pump installation startup, electrical in disinfection building, below building and biosalads building. They are getting very close to being completed. This puts total construction to date at $18,2423, leaving us a couple percent left to finish. They have started demobilizing equipment, they have some of their, getting some of their shipping container office spaces out of there and getting grading done and soils, topsoil put back down, trying to get that seeded here soon. Things are moving along. I think there are a few outstanding items to address as far as change order items. We're meeting with Scott and others on Thursday to discuss that in more detail and get some, get some of those worked out. But in all, things are moving along and getting very close to being completed. And we would recommend payment.
Move to approve.
Second.
Sloan?
Aye.
Jackson?
Aye.
Aaron Holtz?
Aye.
Wietrak?
Aye.
Samali?
Aye.
Item K is report on the rural housing readiness assessment.
All right, so over the past several months, I've given some updates about the rural housing readiness assessment project. So, I just kind of give a, kind of an overview of the whole project so far. And I know, I believe you all received the full report that we received from Iowa State. Last year, 2024, the city of Jefferson partnered with Iowa State University Extension and Outreach and the IEDA to undertake a rural housing readiness assessment. So, this initiative aimed to evaluate and address the city of Jefferson's housing needs, especially around affordability, quality and availability. So, there are several steps to this process, the first step being to form a housing committee. We formed the committee with representatives from the city, from the school, real estate professionals, banks, nonprofits and major employers. So, some of the initial information that we received from Iowa State University was a workbook that city staff worked on. And then, we, we took this to our housing committee initially along with the, the survey requests that we needed to promote for the residents of the community to participate in. So, we figured out the, the best ways to try and get that survey out and then everybody that was involved really did a phenomenal job. We ended up with 377 responses for that survey. But at the first meeting that we had with, with Iowa State Extension, they covered a lot of census data that applied to the city of Jefferson. And some of the interesting findings there was a median rent value. The city of Jefferson median rent was $745, which was below the state average of 949. And the median home value here in the city was $126,900, which was lower than the, the state average of $195,900. Even despite the lower costs, 24% of the renters here in Jefferson spend over 50% of their income on housing, which signals high cost burdens. And also, some of the information we received was some of the demographics on housing demand. 29% of households included someone aged 65%, 65 years or older. Only 13% had children underneath, under 18 years of age, which highlighted a growing need for senior, senior-focused housing. And like I mentioned, the survey results that we received, and that was kind of the second meeting that we had, we went, went over some of those survey results and along with developed an action plan, which was part of the, the whole process. So, we go through all this data and what are we going to do with it? Well, we're going to come up with an action plan that we can actually have a committee that, that works on. So, out of the survey results, some of the top issues out of that survey were affordability, quality of rentals, availability of homes with adequate bedrooms and that there was strong community support for housing rehab, rental inspections and senior living developments. Some of the recommendations that came from that was launching a nonprofit housing corporation, focus on infillot development, vacant property rehabilitation, possibility of rental inspections and explore senior housing developments. So, like I mentioned earlier, our, our committee developed an action plan of areas that we would like to focus, focus on. And our entire committee broke into subcommittees and to, and out of those subcommittees, we came to five focus areas. One being land development incentives, which is kind of create an inventory of available land, identify incentives and maybe possible developers that could work on that. Second area was rehabbing of existing homes, which is self-explanatory. Third area was developed, the possibility of developing a rental database where people could go and check to see what was available and possible landlords that they could rent from in town and then rental inspections. Fourth area was just data collection, which was kind of developing a, a digital location where we could keep track of lots and dilapidated buildings. And then, the fifth element was creating a nonprofit housing entity which could be a place where people could donate money or donate land so that could have the potential of future development. And some of the long-term goals from this would be a more diverse and higher-quality housing stock, growth in families, young professionals and retirees, potential 40-acre residential development, rehabilitating existing homes with improved curb appeal and completion of key redevelopment projects like the middle school project and strengthen school enrollment and community aesthetics. So, out of this process, our, I know several of our subcommittees have already met and with the long-term goal being to meet every 90 days as our full housing committee again. And as part of this process, we did receive a grant for $20,000, which also needed to include matching funds from the city. So, at this time, we have $25,000 that is available to us to spend on our action items. Any, any questions about rural housing readiness? Any, any questions about rural housing readiness assessment?
This, this group all gets together again June 27th.
June, yeah, end of June, yeah, come back together, and hopefully we'll have some, some specific items that we can use some of our grant money on, and then just be a, a good chance for everybody to check in and check progress and see where we're at with our committees.
Is that a public meeting? Anybody can go to it?
Yeah, anybody could come to it, sure.
When is that?
June 26th.
June 26th, yeah.
26th?
And we've been, we've been holding them up here, so.
At what time?
4:30. 4:00 PM.
Oh, 4:00, sorry.
Who's all on that committee, Chad?
Uh, let's see, I'm on there, Scott, Darren.
Like 18 people.
Yeah, I figure there's 14, 15, 14, 15.
Community people on there.
Yeah, so we have.
Oh, yeah, community.
Chad Butterfield, um, Kristen Russell, Larry Savor.
Larry, Larry's on it.
Nikki Ubol.
Nikki Ubol, Amanda Bills, Carl Janing.
Jeff Lamore.
Jeff Lamore, yep, with Extension.
Sarah Huddles.
Sarah, Ken Paxton.
So really, when, when we, we've, we've completed the, the study now and come up with, with this plan and this action plan, and the challenge, and then we've had this, this discussion with Chad, the challenge out of this is to, is the implementation part of that.
Yep.
So, you know, we do have these, these subcommittees, and each one of the subcommittees is tasked with, with certain items to do. So, uh, like my subcommittee, I got all of the excitement of data collection, so we've been inventorying stuff around the community ultimately with the idea about can you, can you determine where all of the vacant lots are and where all of the available lots might be, looking at infill housing, still looking at that as a very, very economical way to, to try to get some new houses in town, so. There's really a, a method to the madness, but it involves quite a little bit of legwork now, which is where the subcommittees come into play.
Any other questions? All right.
Thank you. Onto reports.
Jim? Bickleball Court, uh, we have not got a schedule for the acrylic surfacing yet. Uh, be following up with contract on that. Hopefully, it's coming soon. Uh, overnight temps are still dipping down. I think he's waiting for that, but I think we're getting close here, and hopefully that'll be coming pretty soon here. Westwood sidewalk improvements, uh, we're working on a preliminary layout right now. Uh, then we'll have a kickoff meeting with the city and discuss that, and be looking at a public information meeting sometime this summer on that project. And then, uh, the Greenwood Development, uh, Study, we're having a kickoff meeting tomorrow. We'll review, uh, objectives and goals on that and get working on that one, so that's all I have.
Roxanne?
No report.
David?
No report.
Scott?
No report.
Chad, any other thing else? Okay, Mark, you got anything? Harry?
No report.
Matt?
I would just like to congratulate the city, um, and all the work that's gone in the last 15 years, so between this council and mayor and ones 15 years ago that had the foresight to, um, say yes and make investments in the community and downtown and realized that it was going to take a lot of work and, and thinking more than one step ahead to make a difference in, in saving what would absolutely be buildings not existing today, and take a peek inside the middle school to see what some of the downtown buildings would have looked like and then end up, uh, on the ground. So, um, sometimes we have to do that. We have to look more than that one step ahead and, and take risk on things that are calculated that we may not see the results of in our time on council, and that, uh, our kids and grandkids will, will appreciate. And, uh, certainly, this national recognition is a part of 15 years or more in the making, and, uh, really, really proud to be a part of it with everyone here, and hope everyone else feels just as proud. This is a, a national recognition that is a really, a really dang big deal, and it's, uh, we're obviously not done, and excited to use this to, to catapult even further into the future.
Chad?
No report.
Matt? Darren?
Parks and Rec met last night, and, uh, with the architect from OPM, I think he did an excellent job of anticipating what we might ask for in money and kind of non-negotiables, and he already had some ideas ready to go. And the other thing that stood out to me was, um, the bathrooms for Davenport Park, which are going to come with the Grow Green County Grant and the, what's the smaller grant called?
Community Foundation.
Community Foundation.
Just on, on the bathrooms, you know, the, they had applied for a, a grant that was a little bit larger than, than what they received, so there's a little bit of shortfall on, on the money end of things. So we're making this work through having the city staff do largely the installation of water sewer lines. Okay, so, and basically, that's water and sewer lines from the sewer plant down to, to Davenport, to the new location, but the water and sewer lines would be installed by city staff. If you ever get the chance to, uh, run into the city staff, you might thank them for their willingness to do that, because they're, it makes the project doable.
And they're hoping to have those bathrooms all be ready to go by, you know, probably about time to winterize them, so late, late fall, I think, is the goal if all goes well. So it'll be done this year.
I have no report. Now's the time, I'd entertain a motion to go in closed section, session, per Iowa Code 21.5, parent one, parent I.
Go ahead and take a roll. All right.
I'll make motion to go into possession.
Somebody's sleeping. Aaron Holtz?
Aye.
Jackson?
Aye.
Sloan?
Aye.
Wietrak?
Aye.
Semalik?